What are we doing? How are we looking?
So for recognition of Ross.
Ross, if you can hear me, can you test your microphone, please? Ross, can you hear me? Hi, Ross, can you test your microphone, please?
Yes, do you hear me?
Thank you.
I get it.
All right, directors, you all ready? All right, students, ready? Good evening. I will now call the November twenty twenty-five meeting of the Ben Lepine School Board of Directors to order. I would like to introduce our participants this evening. To my immediate left is Vice Chair Amy Tatum, Director Cameron Fisher, Kena Chadwick, Shirley Olson, and Director Ross Tomlin is joining us virtually. To my immediate right is Superintendent Dr. Stephen Cook, Deputy Superintendent, excuse me, Dr. Lisa Burke, and Board Clerk Janet Bojanowski, and I'm Marcus Legrand, Chair of the Board. We also have our student representatives join us today. Also, Alliance has joined us as well. Thank you for being here, I appreciate it very much. And with Alliance, we have Lauren Sheen from Summit High School, correct? Thank you very much. And Royan Roberts from Summit as well, correct? Ben Hi, thank you very much. It had S H S on there, thank you, sorry about that. No worries. And also for the Student Voice Council, we have Sam Brooks-Bank from Caldera, correct? Okay, and then Harper Ween is coming from Ben Senior High School, and Paige Press is coming from Mountain View High School. Thank you for being here tonight. I would now please ask everyone to stand, remove your hats, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to Agenda Item Number Three, Review of the Agenda. Dr. Cook, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. Although there are any changes to the agenda, point the policy and the consent for information has been updated, and since the agenda was originally posted, I will review these policies when we get to the item later on in the agenda. Fellow Board members, are there any changes to the agenda? All right, thank you. Hearing no changes, we will proceed with the agenda as presented. And now I would like to turn it over to Dr. Cook for district recognitions.
All right, if I could get Jennifer McGee to come up here and join me. We did, we surprised her with this award. All right. I am very honored to give the Champion for Students Award to a valued member of the Lepine Middle School community, math and robotics teacher Jennifer McGee. She is also the Advisory and Academic Director and Coordinator of the After School and Summer Programs. Before we share Jennifer's nomination, I want to highlight that she was instrumental in Lepine Middle School receiving the first national Wayfinder North Star Award. This is a really big deal, you should clap now. Thank you for clapping. This award recognizes schools that exhibit outstanding commitment in implementing Wayfinders future-ready skill lessons with fidelity and excellence. Her glowing nomination came from Assistant Principal Darla Brandon. Yeah, there she is back there. Here's a little bit of what Darla shared. As the coordinator of various programs, Jennifer has consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership and commitment to the improvement of our school community. For the past five years, Jennifer has facilitated our summer programs securing extensive grants to sustain this initiative. The program focuses on academic skill development, team building, and exploration through enriching field trips. Every lesson and experience is planned with meticulous care for months leading up to this program. With twenty-six years of dedicated service as an educator, Jennifer is always the first to step up, to lend a hand, and to support her colleagues. So, in recognition of your exceptional leadership and service to the Lepine Middle School community, as coordinator of key programs and valued instructional coach and curriculum leader, Jennifer, you have strengthened staff development and student success. Your commitment is instrumental in Lepine Middle School receiving the National Wayfinder North Star Award, serving to enrich the lives of students and colleagues alike. Your dedication and leadership has made a lasting impression on the Lepine Middle School community. We are very proud to recognize you as our champion for students. Congratulations. All right, would you like to hear from Jennifer? Say yes.
You said they wouldn't make me do that. I was very surprised to have you all walk in my room, kind of going, why are you here? But, you know, I just, I show up and I do my best every day with the great people that we have to work with. And, I mean, so many teachers do that every day, and, you know, we all deserve to be recognized, so just do it again.
And that's true, thanks for showing up, Jennifer. All right, we're gonna be awkward now while we take a picture or two. And Darla and Brian, can you guys come on up?
Yeah.
How about family, family members come up for the photo too? We'd like to have you up here.
Oh, good, he rolled his eyes. So my husband teaches with us now, and my son is subbing.
Oh, wow. Did you hear that? Husband teaches at Lepine Middle School, and now son is subbing, right? Well, somebody come over here by me. Okay. All right, that's it for Champion for Students. At this point, could I get Jamie Goldman to come up? We're gonna have a moment with the foundation.
Hi, my name's Anne Westerhoff, and this is Jamie Goldman, and we're the Executive Directors for the Education Foundation. And in October, we had the opportunity to visit twenty-three schools in the Ben Lepine School District to present Classroom Enrichment Grants, awarding sixty-six educators across the district. The areas in which we awarded these enrichments were covered throughout social, emotional, and physical wellness, art, music, theater, and humanities, STEM and STEAM projects, different special needs projects, CTE programs, language arts, and world languages.
Our classroom enrichment grants are dedicated to providing resources and support to educators in the Ben Lepine Schools. Through this program, our goal is to enhance the learning experience and promote academic achievement for students in our community. Here are a few examples of how the funds were used. In high schools, at Mountain View, they did Cool Supplies Create Cool Art. Lepine got welding supplies. Realms chemistry and AP Environmental Science lab supplies. For Pilot Butte Middle School, coding and robotics programs, Prisma color pencils and modeling clay. High Desert Middle School, emerging readers library and snowshoeing field trips. Realms, a reset room for regulation support and brain state interventions. And Silver Rail Elementary School, leveled nonfiction decodable books for small group intervention. Pine Ridge, lifelong, or sorry, The Life of a Frog Project. Research reading books. And North Star Elementary got specialized materials for special education classroom. If you'd like to see the whole list, let me know.
So we would like to thank First Interstate Bank, Selco Community Credit Union, and Mount Bachelor for their continued support of the foundation. Because of these and our other community partners like On Point Community Credit Union, Lonza, and Hayden Homes, we would like to present the check to the Ben Lepine Schools for our Classmate Enrichment Grants and our Activity Feast scholarships in the amount of seventy-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
And that's it for district recognitions.
Thank you, Dr. Cook, and I want to thank Lepine Educational Foundation for all that hard work. Thank you so, so much. It means a lot to our district. Ready? All right, here we go. Thank you, Dr. Cook. We're now here for our student representatives and who join us this evening. Please introduce yourself and the school you attend before speaking. Thank you very much.
I'm also a junior at Ben Hi.
My name is Sam Brooks-Bank, and I'm a senior at Caldera.
Yeah, I'm here, sorry. Thank you for having us here and giving us the opportunity to share what is happening in our schools from a student's perspective. We also want to recognize the board's ongoing work and the partnership between you and the Student Voice Council as we work towards a shared goal of a strong student learning clarity and continuous improvement across the school district.
During our meeting on November fourth, we reflected on the last school board meeting and discussed ways the council hopes to continue growing, both in our leadership skills and how we collaborate as a group.
As we moved into our discussion, we focused on a prominent topic, the remaining questions about standards-based instruction and grading. The council was grateful to have time with Mr. Duval on October twenty-sixth to ask questions and receive a presentation, which helped many of us understand the system more clearly. Even with that conversation, students still see several opportunities for improvement, including communication and transparency, consistency in implementation, student impact, and attendance and classroom engagement.
Communication and transparency. Students, teachers, and families have expressed that they still feel unsure about parts of standards-based grading. Many of us have noticed challenges in understanding how the system works and how grades will be determined. This uncertainty has created stress and confusion for some students who want to know how to succeed. We were made aware that the district plans to hold information nights, which we believe will be very beneficial to combating this issue.
Students have experienced notable differences in how standards-based grading is being used from classroom to classroom. Some areas where students feel more clarity would help include differences in how different teachers define an award of four, uncertainty about what advanced application looks like, and variation in grading practices even within the same course. As defined by Mr. Duval, a four reflects the ability to apply knowledge at a higher level, not simply getting one hundred percent correct. However, students report that this definition isn't always applied consistently. In some classes, a four is only given for perfect accuracy. In others, a student can receive a perfect score without a four because it wasn't above and beyond. To help narrow these gaps, we believe that district-wide calibration, or the use of point-five increments, could be helpful so students can better understand where they stand. Some course structures, such as project-based or very assignment-like classes, have also struggled to fit within a standards-based grading. Students in these classes have expressed confusion about how progress is assessed, especially in courses that are important for graduation or career skills.
Next, we'd like to move on to the student impact. Many students are worried about the possible effects of standards-based instruction and grading on GPAs. We understand that this data is not available yet, but students are concerned about how grade differences could affect scholarships, college admissions, and comparison with students in districts that don't use standards-based grading. Another concern is athletic ability. While OSAA rules determine eligibility based on semester grades, many teams have additional expectations. Students feel it would be helpful if coaches were provided clear guidance about how early semester grades may look different under standards-based grading, especially with the decaying average system.
We also want to acknowledge the stress students have communicated about heavier weight being placed on end-of-semester assessments. While some teachers have adjusted to reduce this pressure, not all have, and students feel this impact. Some members of the council believe reconsidering the decaying average might reduce the stress as the district continues implementation.
Attendance and classroom engagement. Finally, standards-based grading has affected teachers' ability to manage their classrooms and has reduced the incentive for students to attend class. When assignments no longer contribute to a student's overall grade, class can start to feel optional, leading many students to stay home because they see no clear benefit to being there. At the same time, teachers are facing heavier grading workloads, promoting some to take sick days just to catch up. Together, these issues have created tension between the students and teachers, straining classroom relationships, and weakening the overall learning environment.
Many students and several staff members feel that these concerns have not yet been fully addressed. And while we understand standards-based grading is new, we want to offer student insight into the areas where further clarity and support would help. We appreciate the steps the district has already taken and hope our perspective can contribute to continued thoughtful implementation. At our next meeting, we will continue this discussion and also begin reviewing the new cellphone policy. Thank you for your time tonight and your continued support of the Student Voice Council, and do you have any questions for us right now?
Directors, questions?
I do. I'm curious, how have you been kind of taking the pulse? I think at one point there was a survey being considered, or different high school reps were going to kind of circle back to their high schools to get an understanding, or maybe do some focus groups or that sort of thing.
Yeah, so a lot of our data specifically comes from student interactions and just teacher information. I myself have been talked to by multiple teachers, and they have told me that classroom management has gotten a lot harder under standards-based grading, specifically because some teachers do not use fours for all assignments. Sometimes they make it a practice assignment worth zero points to save specifically the scores for assessments. And that's making kids not show up, and it's been putting a lot of strain on the teachers.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to, oh, did you want to add something? I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm good.
I, I think this is so great to hear your thoughts. It's so elegantly put together and shared with us. This is exactly why Student Voice Council exists, is to get a student's perspective from multiple high schools, and it is so valuable. And I agree with you, the rollout has been misty and concerning, and you are, I want to validate this. Like, high school isn't confusing and stressful enough that this is not the vision, right? But something that I am working hard for, and I think everybody on this board is to encourage more of that transparency, more of that addressing these concerns and needs and getting clarity, because there's a lot of misinformation out there on what is behind the purpose of standards-based grading. And I hope with patience and also continuing to hold the district accountable and your administrators at your high schools accountable, and level leaders and your teachers, by asking questions and expressing your concerns, that this can be amenable very soon, because I know that this causes a lot of anxiety for folks, and that's not the intention behind it. The hope is that it is to alleviate anxiety when it comes to high stakes. And I'm sorry that it's feeling this way for you, and I want it to be better. So that's something I'm pledging to continue to address. So thank you.
Other directors, any other questions? Good? Ross?
No, I just, I just really appreciate the feedback from the students. That's what we're, that's what we're here to listen for.
Thank you very much. Alliance, do you have any input in this as well? Because y'all are students too. So, I know you're not a part of the Voice Council, but do you have any concerns about the standard-based piece?
I think they covered it very well.
You, once you turn your mic on, it's right, you had to hit the button. Thank you very much.
I think they covered it very well.
All right, cool. Thank you very much. Thank you for all that information. Thank you for the feedback, and we'll continue. I know they're going to continue to keep working on this. Huh? Oh, I'm sorry.
Alliance needs to.
Oh, okay, Alliance needs to have the report as well. I'm sorry, my bad. Thank you. My bad. Go. Whenever you're ready.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren Shane, and I am a student at Summit and a representative from the BLS Alliance. For those of you who aren't familiar with our mission, we are an LGBTQ+ support and advocacy group that is sponsored by the district and entering its fourth year of operation. Our members include parents, teachers, community members, and of course, students such as the two of us. Our, our goals include, our goals include supporting queer youth and their families within our district, advising the district on policies and practices, and providing support to school-level programs such as GSAs. This final goal is particularly relevant to me, as I am the president of Summit High School's GSA. When I founded the club last year, we very much struggled with finding members. However, after working with the Alliance, seeking support, and connecting with members of GSAs across other high schools, I was able to grow the club significantly. Something that helped in particular was Alliance-sponsored events, where I was able to connect with students at feeder middle schools and recruit them to the club. I'm gonna give it away to my partner.
Hello. My name is Rowan, and I am a student at Bend High School, and I am also a representative of Alliance. Lauren covered this very well, but I have a couple more things to add. Our, the purpose of Alliance is heavily about sharing resources with other members of the queer community and parents or teachers who would like to learn more on how to support trans youth and queer youth in general. As well as, it does a lot of event planning. As Lauren said, a lot of events have been sponsored by Alliance that allow for connections throughout schools, which is something that queer youth especially need, is a strong network. Overall, it's just about learning and growing together and finding ways we can improve our community in order to make a safer and more welcoming environment. Some of the events that have happened, there's been queer proms in the past. Most recently, there was a candy exchange after Halloween. And upcoming, there will be a craft night for queer, the queer community. We also have guest speakers. We have had people from Mosaic, and tonight we had a wonderful person from COCC come and speak. And overall, it's just a very supportive group. Thank you.
Directors, do you have any questions for Alliance?
I just want to say again, thank all of you and each of you for being here and for bringing us some perspective. It's hard to sit behind this format and not understand what it's really like in our schools. So, thank you so much. And I, with Director Cameron, are pledging to make the standards-based grading as smooth as we can. It's not going to be smooth. It's going to be kind of like chunky peanut butter, but that's okay if we all are committed to understand what the, what the intent is and how it will work in the end. And we've been assured that things like college applications and some of those things that you have to worry about in terms of moving on, standards-based grading should not in any way be a barrier. So, we just need to understand how to use it, and we need to understand how it's converted into letter grades. So, thanks again for being here.
I have a comment for Alliance. I'm so glad that you're in addition to our student representation here. And one thing that I've heard concerns over the last couple of years with members of Alliance, but also others in the schools, particularly high school and families, is access to bathrooms. And I want to just assure you that I have checked with administration, and it has been very clearly assured to me that no student should have any barrier to access to gender-neutral bathrooms if they need them. So, please share that with your high schools. If you run into any concerns that this district is supporting access to gender-neutral bathrooms regardless of concerns about behavior, concerns about vaping, et cetera, but there should be no barrier to bathrooms that are designated gender-neutral bathrooms.
Any other directors? All right, thank you, Alliance. Thank you, Student Voice Council, for your input. Appreciate it very, very much. And we will move on to our next agenda item. And also just a reminder, students in Alliance as well, we have our agenda items. If you have any questions or if you have any input, feel free to just chime in. The mics are right there. That's what you're here for. Okay, cool. All right. All right. Next agenda item. "The Board of Directors Leadership Values Communication from Students, Families, Staff, and Community Members. It Helps to Guide the Work of the Bend-Lepine Schools." Public comment is just one of those many avenues available to ensure the connection. Members of the public may also submit thoughts, questions, or concerns to the board via email or in writing. Individual board members also make themselves available for phone, video, or in-person conversations. This said, I will remind the public that while this is a meeting of the Board of Directors that takes place in public, it's not a meeting with the public. It's a meeting with the Board of Directors to conduct district business. As such, the board will not respond to public comment made during tonight's meeting. Instead, issues will be recorded and referred to the proper staff member to follow with you. We will now open the public comment. Our policy is typical, up to two minutes per speaker until the cap has been reached for the agenda item. A timer is provided. You'll see them on the screens above. The large screens to the virtual attendees to ensure every speaker receives updates during the presentation on remaining time. If the speaker goes over time or if the speaker messages not in adherence with our policies, for example, being personally directed, abusive, discriminatory, repetitive, or off-topic, I may ask the speaker to cease and determine, excuse me, terminate the speaker's privilege to address the board. At this time, I will call, I think it's Kate Boldgett, it's B-O-L-D-G-E-T-T is what I have here. Is that correct? Blodgett, all right. Thank you, Katie, correct? Thank you, Ms. Blodgett. Would you please come and address here, please, the mic, use the mic here, and please make sure that you read the one in this, press the green button, please. Thank you.
Perfect. Hi, I'm Katie Blodgett. Full disclosure, I am one of the parents on Bend-Lepine Schools Alliance Group. I am also part of the Bend-Lepine Equity Coalition. But I want to kind of just, I know you get to hear a lot of good and bad and ugly and, and things, but I did want to say that we have been with the Bend-Lepine School District since Juile, so since elementary, all the way up now we're in high school. And as a parent, first and foremost, of a transgender child, I just want to say I appreciate your efforts. I do think we're on a good track. We have a long way to go. We have a lot of ground to cover, but we feel safe with this school district, and that is important to me. And that is one of the main reasons we haven't gone anywhere else, was because I know at this school district, we will be safe, and we are taken care of here. And I just want to say I appreciate that to, to everybody.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right. Our next speaker would be Brandy Steelhammer.
Let me get my glasses on so I can see what I wrote. Hi, everybody. My name is Brandy Steelhammer, and my sons are graduates of Summit High School. I'm here tonight on behalf of Central Oregon Gun Safety Advocates. A year ago, a child brought a firearm to Pilot Butte Middle School. Soon after, we sent a letter to Bend-Lepine Leadership, signed by over 100 community members, including healthcare professionals and elected leaders. We asked the district to educate parents about the critical importance of secure firearm storage because 75% of school shooters get their gun from home or the home of a close relative. And because Deschutes County's suicide rate for ages 10 to 17 is much higher than state and national rates, with 58% using a firearm. Research shows that kids are much safer when adults lock up their guns. While some of our asks from the letter have not been met, the district agreed to offer free gun locks to Bend-Lepine families, which they can pick up in the education center. This is a huge, huge step in community safety, and we are extremely grateful to the district. But hardly anybody knows that these locks are available. Last December, it was posted in the family spotlight, but it doesn't appear that it has been announced anywhere since. And only 15 locks have been handed out in the past year from the education center. So, we wonder, do counselors, nurses, principals, and teachers know? Are they allowed to let families know? Can Lepine families be offered free locks in their city? We call on the administration to increase efforts to spread the word. Please don't allow the urgency and critical importance of firearm safety to wane after what happened at Pilot Butte. Our team stands ready to provide more free locks to the district as your communication efforts ramp up. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Thank you, Brandy, for that reminder, and thank you for the information. Our next speaker will be Jesse Bletto.
I'm a parent of a child at High Lakes Elementary School and also a child clinical psychologist and pediatric neuropsychologist at St. Charles Hospital in Bend. This letter is being written to encourage the ongoing supportive music education as a means of improving child and adolescent mental health in Central Oregon. I'm writing this letter to express my support of music education in Central Oregon and elementary schools. While my daughter's school is fortunate to have an excellent music program and teacher at High Lakes Elementary School, several schools in Bend-Lepine Schools District do not, let alone elementary schools in the Redmond School District, which have none. My passion for music began as a young child in Silverton, Oregon, listening to my grandfather play Bach Brahms, Segovia, and Mozart on his classical guitar. I discovered a love of music as a young child, and as an adult, observed daily the positive impact that music has had on my own daughter, as well as many of my patients. However, my work as a child clinical psychologist and neuropsychologist has reinforced the value of music education as a means of healthy emotional expression in children. I provide child and adolescent evaluations to support diagnostic treatment recommendations for children with ADHD, autism, brain injury, concussion, trauma from sexual abuse, physical abuse, sex trafficking, in utero, fetal alcohol, and drug exposure, leukemia, brain tumors, congenital heart disease, and anxiety and depression. Many students in Central Oregon struggle with mental illness. From 2007 to 2017, the school-aged, the school-age-adjusted suicide rate has doubled in Deschutes County. What is more, the age-adjusted suicide rate in Deschutes County is consistently twice as high as the overall rate in Oregon and the United States in general. I have a lot of, we're running out of time, but I have a lot of ideas about how and why music education supports mental health in kids. And I'd be interested in reading this later or to certain board members if they're interested in learning more. Before moving to Bend, I was a professor at the University of Washington in Seattle Children's Hospital. One of my jobs there was to work in the ED. And when I left, we had about 20 to 40 kids presenting each day, as young as eight years old, recovering from a suicide attempt or in the ED with suicidal ideation. And I do think that there are ways to improve mental health in kids by supporting music education and developing a sense of cohesion for a lot of kids that don't play traditional sports. Thanks.
Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate it. All right, we will move on to agenda eyes item. Thank you for that information for all public comments. Thank you for all those comments. We'll now move to consent agenda. Is there any discussion regarding the topics in the consent agenda? Directors? Oh, Steve. Okay. Directors, question for you. We are looking at the consent agenda. We are now moving to consent agenda. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? Okay, we'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ross, did you have a question about the consent agenda?
No, I was just gonna move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
All second.
All right, it has been approved by Director Tomlin and second by Vice Chair Tatum. And now call for a vote. No, excuse me, actually, no, call for a discussion, new discussion. No one, here, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Okay, no abstentions. All right, all in favor at all. Ready? Okay. Now we turn it over to Dr. Cook for the consent for information.
Thank you, Chair Legrand. We have a pretty large batch of HR, human resources-related policies in this month's consent for information. They've been updated to align with our current practices, also in alignment with our current CBAs with our unions, and in alignment with OSBA's sample recommended policies. We also have updated policy JBB-AP, Educational Equity, to align with a recent OSBA policy update and change. Additionally, we've also included our 2025/26 Elementary Commitments Document, which outlines expectations for how to access our curriculum, use, and the instructional time recommended for our elementary grade levels. Also, you will see two documents that are follow-ups to incidents from the October 14th board meeting. The first is an email sent to the board by the city of Bend, specifically the mayor, regarding affordable housing and a response to public comment that was received during that meeting regarding bond expenditure equity and fundraising. And then the last document is, in the consent for information, is an emergency declaration regarding the damages to the gym at Pilot Butte Middle School due to water damage received during a storm on August 10th. The district's Maintenance and Facilities Department will be working to assess mitigation, demolition, and repairs to effectively replace that gym floor. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Directors, any questions? Students as well? All right. Thank you, directors. And now call to action. Call to action, we're gonna call to action.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, directors, so are you ready? We'll now move to our action items. In old, in odd number of years, board members vote to elect regional representatives to the Oregon School Board's Legislative Policy Committee. This year, the Central Oregon region has one candidate, Sean, is it Gallagher? Yes. His nomination form and candidate questionnaire are included in the board packet, which many of us have already hopefully reviewed. Is there any discussions about this action item? Okay, see, there's no discussion. At this time, I will not entertain a motion.
I will move to nominate Sean Gallagher for OSBA LPC, position three.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, it is been motioned by Director Tatum and second by Director Tomlin. Thank you. Now that the motion has been made, any discussion for this motion? Okay, here, no discussion.
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, my bad.
Was he the only one who put in for this?
Yes, he was the only one from our region, yes.
Just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Yes, no worries. Hearing no additional discussion on this matter, I would call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And now we'll turn it over to Dr. Burke. And now we'll turn it over to Dr. Burke.
All right, so Board, Lisa Burke, Deputy Superintendent. Oh, and every year, we need to do an update to what is called the Integrated Programs. Integrated Programs represents the majority of the grants that we get related to all kinds of different funding within our district. So primarily, student investment account, high school success, early literacy dollars, all of those are related to and under the umbrella of Integrated Programs. And each year, we need to tell you what we did with those dollars the year prior and what sorts of successes or challenges we have noticed. So this is a graph that you've seen before, or a graphic, rather, that you've seen before. This is just highlighting all of the different programs that kind of are umbrellaed under some common goals that the state has related to well-rounded education, equity advancement, engaged community, and strengthened systems and capacity. There are goals that we have in all of these different areas related to the variety of different funding streams that we have. For us, it's about twenty million dollars when we're talking about what we spend our time on. So this, I won't necessarily read this word for word, but this basically represents what we have learned with our spending this year. The fact is, is that we haven't done new and exciting and big, different spending. We know the areas of need that we have, and we have been consistently reinforcing and dovetailing dollars toward those needs for the past several years. So last year was no exception to that. So some of our successes are that we continue to advance CTE initiatives within our schools, so they continue to develop and advance over time. Several school staff have begun early adoption of standards-based grading and instruction. And really, the dollars that are associated with that is time for substitutes to be able to allow teachers to get together, spend time on group creation, and just learning from each other. We've had a new reading curriculum adoption that was implemented. Again, substitute dollars have been used for that. Social-emotional learning curriculum implementation, so that, as you know, for us is a K-12 adoption of Wayfinder. And that continues to be strengthened through a variety of ways. Primarily, our high schools diving into the use of advisory sessions in order to provide some consistent SEL opportunities, as well as some mandatory components that are required by the state. And then our newcomer programming needs and students who are new to our district, who are coming from a variety of different areas and are not speaking English as they come into our school district, is at an all-time high. And the needs that are associated with those students are both in relation to just supporting them in transition, but also to support our teachers to know how to adapt instruction for sometimes much older students. That make, it can make it really challenging when you are not kind of speaking the majority language in your classroom. And so we want students to have success and teachers to feel like they are confident and comfortable with the ability to adapt some of their instruction. One area continues to stand out is just supporting students with mental health challenges. What we've seen kind of leading up to and post-pandemic are just that those needs continue to rise, and the regional supports and dollars for regional supports are not sufficient for what we see our needs are. We do have great partnerships with our Deschutes County Mental Health, the county, and all of their supports. They allow, in some partnerships, they allow for specialists to be in our schools, working with our students on a variety of different topics. Most primarily is through a project called Sources of Strength that all of our secondary students and even in grades three through five starting to be involved in. So these have all been kind of highlights of our work related to spending for Integrated Programs. Our narrative related to challenges that exist, again, if you were to look at this exact presentation a year ago, like, some of the words have changed, but the challenges continue to exist, which is that we notice an acute shortage of professionals in the area of special education. This is both in terms of what we see coming out of, like, actual programs, but also just areas in our region. Like, for us, one of the things that we notice is that if we don't hire special education professionals during the hiring, kind of typical hiring time between February and April, it's very unlikely that we will be able to access people. And when people leave throughout the year, we are often unable to fill those roles, which we see a shortage across the state, but it's acute for areas that are less populous. So in your Central Oregon region, we have fewer access to those individuals. We also have an acute need for training and supports relating to supporting students with limited language proficiency and a continued need for supports for students experiencing high needs that often manifest in dysregulation. And so that is where our teachers feel the strain in both creating a great system for that individual, but then also feeling like they can create a great learning environment for the other students who are not experiencing that dysregulation. So these continue to be challenges for us. It is both a training, time, access, individual, it's kind of a problem in all of those areas. One of the challenges that we are noticing is that when educational assistants are gone, for whatever reason, individuals that we very much depend on for the success of students, the ability to fill their positions is very challenging. And so then our existing staff end up filling in for these different areas, and other experiences for students, educational experiences for students, can often get missed despite great efforts in the schools. And so this is, this is not necessarily a unique challenge for Bend-Lupine, but I think we do have some unique layers in that our geographical component to this is a factor, and the way in which we can draw people to this area with affordable housing, challenging wages for some of our earliest entry positions, all of those continue to be challenges. So that is my report for Integrated Programs. In next board, during the next board meeting, you will see our grant agreement for the next biennium. And in that, that is just up for your approval, but basically that allows us to continue to receive these dollars. Happy to take any questions.
Directors? Good? Everyone's good? Students?
Yeah, I had one just specifically about how the money is split up into CTE programs, because I know at Caldera we have a lot, so I'm just wondering how you allocate the money depending on the program.
That is a great question, Sam, and it's going to test some of my thinking here. Right now, the way that we spend those dollars really primarily has to do with, each school is allocated a certain amount, and I'm not going to have the exact numbers for you right now, but they are allocated certain dollars that allow them to be able to hire staff. It's not the only funding stream for CTE education, but it does support certain areas. So if your school happens to have an interest in creating a nichey CTE program, these dollars may support some of that. Primarily, what we've seen, the uses for CTE related to these grants has been around replenishing or sort of repairing some of the big-ticket items that are part of this. So, for example, we spent about two hundred thousand dollars in the last year for renovations related to air duct quality for woodworking spaces. So in terms of, like, which school receives which dollars, I don't have that information for you right now, but these are, like, broad-level initiatives that allow them to continue.
Perfect. Thank you.
I got a question for you also within that, as it's also, like, many of those CTE directors and stuff who do that work, also for them to be able to have students attend certain things, they have to go find some of those dollars too, am I correct?
Yes, they do. I would say the majority of that type of funding is not from these Integrated Programs. We find that primarily these Integrated Programs are used for large-scale changes or needs that need to happen, but mostly staff.
Okay. Thank you very much. Directors?
Yeah, I have a quick question, Dr. Burke. For other schools who have, who are experiencing a similar lack of, whether it's personnel or resources for mental health, I'm just curious if there's, like, dialogue amongst different schools and different districts and how they're addressing it, or if there's a plan or what that looks like to try to tackle this moving forward. I know it won't be perfect, and I'm curious if there's any way that it can get better.
Yes. I can't speak for other districts, really, but, and maybe Sean or the team can kind of comment on this as you, as you give your presentation that's coming up. One thing that I know that we have found success periodically in is being able to connect with local programming or regional programming that has, like, new people coming into the, into the field and being able to make partnerships with them more quickly or snap them up, maybe out of the job pool a little bit more quickly. So that has, at times, been fruitful. We also have a little bit of a, like, a grow-your-own type of component that we have been able to support some staff who are in current classified roles move into that direction. But often, I would say, we are, we are interested in always saying to our certified general ed teachers, like, hey, what are you thinking about? Do you want to maybe think about special education? And looking at emergency licensure and things like that to get them, get them the tools that they need to sort of be successful. Really, none of those are sort of the ticket, but a combination of a lot of things tend to get us where we need to be, at least initially. Again, the thing that we've seen consistently is that when people leave throughout the year, or we don't hire at the get-go, it's very, very challenging. And so when we have budgetary items that don't come through, or we haven't heard what our budgets will be, or we don't have staffing, we aren't able to say what jobs we have, and therefore, we aren't able to hire people. So the earlier we are able to hire people, the more successful we have found that to be. And, you know, as much press as we can put on the governor and friends is part of the calculus there.
I have a quick question, and maybe this is, has been in the documents, but can you share a little bit about what kind of supports are in place if you do emergency certify a teacher for special education? Or even just, I'm thinking of our new special education teachers, how does that support look different than general ed?
Yeah, so I would imagine our team will touch on that in their presentation here coming up, but we have, we've engaged in some new practices, even as soon as this year, where we're starting to say, okay, yes, as part of, you're newly hired, but now you're going to engage in some specific onboarding for your job alikes. They also have ongoing job-alike opportunities, as well as mentorship. And the directors are connected with different staff at different sites, so as new people come on, they're very much involved in sort of their transition planning. So I'll let these guys talk a little bit more about that, and then if you have lingering questions, I'm happy to dig in further to that.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned that potentially certified, and then maybe come on over here, what about EAs or other classified? Is that still a possibility as well? And is there success in that? If somebody is working as an EA and that kind of grow-your-own within classified?
Yeah, actually, that's what I'm referring to.
Oh, not just somebody who's teaching general ed?
Not just from certified, yeah, general ed sometime. And it's been few and far between. Honestly, the challenges that exist with that is that when somebody gets to the time where their student teaching, where they are needing to student teach, they need to be away from their role. And that makes, that becomes very challenging to sort of fill their position as we're supporting them to become a member. It's like, there are challenges that go with that, too. But certainly, when people say to us, hey, I have an interest, we're sort of clamoring to say, okay, how do we get you there?
Okay, thank you.
I would like to also just add, with the intentionality on the questions, on the focus of mental health and then providing staff that are fully trained and capable of addressing this, just as a reminder that this is an area that the state continues to be laggards in, and that we continue to have to find solutions on how to staff in a meaningful way in our schools. And quite frankly, the fact that the state funds us at eleven percent of our total population for special education and short-changes the entire state with respect to some of our highest, most impacted students that cost well beyond what a standard amount would be, is, continues to be a challenge, because all of those gaps have to be made up with the general fund. So when we talk about partnerships with things like CARESOLIS, or we talk about sources of strength and all of the different ways, having a counselor in every single building in our district, all that's being done despite the fact that we're struggling to meet the expectations budgetarily. And so I just want to make sure that that's first and foremost part of the conversation.
Thank you for that, Dr. Cook, and I think that's a great segue into our next session. Director Reinhardt, your team, ready?
So thanks for having us tonight. You know, coming off of a brief conversation about barriers, we're going to take it a little bit of a different direction tonight and talk about celebrations and successes that we are having in our department. And of course, at the end, we'll leave room for questions and try to answer those questions for y'all, so. So good evening, Chair Legrand, members of the Board, Dr. Cook. My name's Sean Reinhardt. I have the privilege to serve Bend-Lupine Schools as the Executive Director of Student Services. And I'm joined tonight by this very talented and remarkable leadership team that helped me guide this work every day. So I'd like to introduce Tammy Pike, she's the Director of Health Services, Jennifer House, our Director of Student Well-being, Eric Powell, our Director of Student Services, and Sarah Young, Colleen Funderberg, and Joshua Marks are all Directors of Special Education. Together, whoops, I guess I have to do this, too. There's a lot of coordination here. I don't know. Is it this one? Ah, there it is. Together, we support a department whose purpose is simple, to ensure every student at Bend-Lupine Schools is healthy, supported, and included. We have a big umbrella under Student Services. We do a lot. We provide essential supports, we help support all the strategic partnerships that Lisa was beginning to, Dr. Burke was starting to talk about. We have a lot of those types of partnerships, that's how we help do our work. We do school nursing and health services, we support mental and behavioral health, we support the alternative learning options that our students have access to, and of course, we have special education under our umbrella as well. This network of services accesses and touches thousands of students across the district every year. Just with 504s and IEPs alone, we serve twenty-six hundred students in the district. And each one of those represents a unique plan and individualized service for the student. And beyond those individualized plans, we have hundreds of students that rely on every single, that rely every single day on the care and expertise of our school counselors, our student success staff, and our school nurses. These are the adults that the students turn to when they need help, when they need support, need encouragement, when they need medical care, or they just need someone who will listen. It's work that is often unseen and quiet, but it's very profound. Our work is more than just about compliance, it's about creating a space for belonging for all students. So within our certified group, we have expert helpers who bring this promise to life. We have learning specialists, psychologists, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, counselors, and student success staff. And they each bring deep expertise every day to the work. But what makes them so effective is how interconnected they are and how well they work together and how the system complements that. They consult, they plan, they problem-solve together, share their knowledge, and they remove barriers for students. Their combined skill and compassion ensure that each child has the opportunity to grow and learn every day. Also, our classified staff are at the heart of this same promise. They're the everyday helpers that make conclusions. They're the everyday helpers that make conclusion real. Our nurses, they embody this through their extraordinary care and medical expertise to keep students healthy and safe and ready to learn. Alongside them are educational assistants, build daily connections with students, offering structure, support, and skill development. They're often the first to notice when a student needs extra care, and their steady presence is pretty much the foundation, the bedrock for how we function in our schools and support students. Together, our certified and classified staff are part of that interconnected team of helpers and professionals who care deeply about students. So tonight, what we're going to do is share stories about various different folks in our departments and what we do, and help bring this work to life and share a little insight for you. So to start, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the strategic partnerships that we heavily rely on in order to get this work done. So in student services, we believe it takes a village to support the whole child. Our work is strengthened by the strategic partnerships that we have that you're looking at. This includes a collaboration with Healthy Schools, which is a collaboration between us and Chutes County Health Services. And they provide public health specialists in each of our schools. Dr. Snyder's here representing our Healthy Schools. We work with alternative learning organizations such as Central Oregon Intergovernment Council to run youth program, Heart of Oregon Youth Build, J Bar J Youth Ranch. We also have charter schools, that we have two charter schools in our district that we partner with. We contract with several behavioral health organizations to provide services to our students in our schools, Thrive Behavioral Health, Chutes County Behavioral Health, Thrillin' Behavioral Health. We are, we're up, we're increasing our Medicaid reimbursement program that we partner with OHAON, and we have several different providers, Mosaic and St. Charles, and that we partner with to help provide services for students, too. So I'm cueing Joel. Here's a brief vignette of two of our partners talking about the work that we do.
Hi, my name is Ellie Millen. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner and the pediatric medical director for Mosaic Community Health. Over the last several years, pediatric primary care clinics have been meeting with Ben Lepine staff to help optimize how we communicate and assess and treat our patients and students. Student services has been integral to this pathway, helping to identify pain points between communication of primary care providers and school staff, and leverage technology to increase efficiency and communication between these different agencies. This partnership has been really instrumental to ensure that our students and patients receive the best care possible and thrive in their education environment.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Seibel, and I'm a public health specialist with the Healthy Schools program.
Lindsay, what are the key benefits of this partnership?
I think there's a lot of benefits to this partnership, but the biggest one I can think of is that schools are asked to do so much to help ensure that our students are as healthy as they can be, and they're not always given the resources in order to address that. And so public health comes in, and we reach a shared common goal to help make sure that students are as healthy as they can be. And public health brings in those resources that might be lacking in schools.
So if you weren't doing public health in a school, and you were, you know, out in the community, how would you, how would it be different for you?
Oh, man, being in the schools is such a privilege, and I love being able to reach students in their classrooms, be able to talk to staff as they're walking to their next meeting, be at those staff meetings, connect with admin, really know what's going on in the schools. And if I was just sitting in the county office somewhere, I wouldn't get those opportunities. So I love being in the schools.
And what is, what project are you most proud of?
I am most proud of the Sources of Strength Program. That's a mental health promotion and suicide prevention program, and it partners trained adults and trained students to help make sure that we know where our resources are when we're going through tough times. And I've seen it change schools and the culture, and I just, I love being part of it.
Thank you. Okay, so now Tammy Pike will share a little bit more about health services.
Hi, good evening. Okay. Our health services team is dedicated to supporting the physical, mental, and emotional health of every student so they can thrive in and out of the classroom. Healthy students are better learners. Nurses bridge the gap between healthcare and education. Every day, our nurses make it possible for students with chronic conditions to attend school safely, focus on class, and fully participate in activities. For example, the impact of our school nurses have for students with medical needs such as type 1 diabetes is invaluable. Currently, Ben Lepine Schools has 59 students with type 1 diabetes. Many require individualized daily medical oversight. In addition to addressing students' daily medical needs, nurses also consider the support students may require outside of school, such as challenges at home, housing instability, or financial barriers to accessing necessary supplies. School nurses frequently make the difference between students who are struggling with day-to-day challenges and those who are able to thrive academically and socially. Their close partnership with healthcare providers is critical to ensuring every student can work toward a successful educational journey. Here's a video of one of our nurses, a local healthcare provider, and a couple of parents. Their perspectives illustrate the real difference this work makes every day.
With the district almost 20 years, my favorite thing about my job, most rewarding part, is working with type 1 diabetics and their families. I like the kids to be able to come to school and just be a kid, and I can advocate for them, I can empower them, can help care for them while they're at school. And I don't just take care of them while they're in the school building, it doesn't just stop at the door. I also try to help them with resources outside. And one of my favorite stories that connects school with outside is, I have a student that was really struggling with food, home, or housing insecurity, mental health issues, fitting in at school, access to medical care, taking care of themselves, just all around struggling. I had the family apply for a scholarship for camp. They got a full scholarship, they came to camp, started out camp, really reluctant to be there, not participating in anything, not engaging with anyone. We were having to go to them to do any kind of diabetes care, they wouldn't come to us. By the end of camp, this student was having the best time. They were doing their own shots, they were interacting with other campers, they were...
Hi, I'm Dr. Eden Miller. I'm here at Diabetes and Obesity Care with my physician husband, the other Dr. Miller. We just want to take a moment and highlight school nurses, what an integral part of the healthcare team. I love engaging and interfacing with all of you frontline workers at school, all the little kiddos that come into my office. We have this great relationship while they're at school, being safe, helping manage their disease.
Hi, my name is Catherine Blue, and my son Asa developed type 1 diabetes when he was five years old, right before entering school. He completed his entire education, kindergarten through senior year of high school at Ben Lepine. And I can say with all honesty and gratitude that the school nurses in that time were absolutely crucial in not just helping him manage his disease, keeping his blood sugars safe, and dealing with emergencies and all of that stuff, but also in teaching him how to manage his own condition.
Having Nurse Angelina take care of Jack during the school day provides us with so much relief. It's wonderful to know that he's in such caring hands. She's been with him since kindergarten, and so she is almost like family to us, where we just depend on her and trust her, and it's really life-changing knowing that our child is in such great hands.
All right. Every day looks a little different in the life of the student with a chronic health condition. Every day requires careful attention and nursing judgment. Every day, a student needs reassurance and understanding. Every day, a student attends school brings them one step closer to successful and meaningful educational experience. Success is when our students with chronic medical conditions can fully participate in class, activities, and friendship. Behind every student managing a chronic health condition, there's a school nurse ensuring that learning never stops. That's the impact of school nursing.
Can you hear me if I put it right there? No, you cannot. Is it like a lean? Okay, ready. Okay, hi, I'm Jennifer House, I'm the director of student wellbeing, and I'm going to go over a couple of the interventions and programs that I'm responsible for. So this year, we have 55 school counselors total, and a full or part-time counselor at every Ben Lepine Elementary for the first time in our history. Counselors provide academic, college career, and social-emotional support at all schools to ensure equitable access and success for every student. They are data-driven educational leaders who develop and implement and assess a comprehensive school counseling program collaborating to foster a supportive and high-achieving school environment. Our Life and Career Ready Initiative is really the braiding of three key initiatives, and that is our social-emotional learning, our college and career readiness, and our positive youth development outcomes that we partner with Healthy Schools on. We're in our third year of implementing Wayfinder and School Links. With Wayfinder, we now have curriculum and student assessment data on six essential life and career readiness skills that we can teach, assess, and support. Utilizing School Links, we now have college and career post-secondary data for our last two graduating classes, as well as a tool and resources for students to build and monitor their education plans. Our Student Success Intervention, which is a tier-three mental health intervention, provides critical onsite mental health skill building and support to students. And we know that research says that when students have access to mental health within our school buildings, they're six times more likely to access it. So we're really thankful to have this resource in most of our schools. We continue to have more clinicians in these roles and have been able to grow that number each year. In partnership with our Alternative Pathway Program, Ben Lepine's Grow Your Own program helps our classified employees obtain licenses. And currently, we have approximately a third of our student success educational assistance in clinical graduate programs, which is really exciting. We are in year two of our dedicated professional development with our counselors, clinicians, and school psychs to strengthen our tier-three care teams, ensuring targeted and effective interventions for students in need of significant support. We've put together a quick video, which is pretty cute, of our school counselors in our elementary schools. So if Joel could cue that up, we can show you a day in the life of our school counselors in elementary school.
The good thing about having a school counselor is that they're like super kind, and they always help you figure out what you need.
She teaches us about our feelings.
From tier-one support groups and explicit teaching for all of our kids, to supporting our teachers in biased lessons.
School counselors are trained to help with you with your emotion, not just sadness, but happiness, too.
Because they help you when you don't feel good.
Be kind to me, and when I'm angry, and I don't know what I'd do without her, because she's so sweet to me.
She is constantly stepping in where needed when students are having a need for a caring adult that they can trust.
Because when my feelings get too big, she comforts me.
She can help you with not just family, but friends and schoolwork, too.
Our school counselor really connects with our families that are most in need.
And we need that in schools. We need, we need extra supports. Classroom teachers do a lot, and we are great at what we do, but we need these extra supports.
Just having that extra person, I know for us as a thought partner, really incredible as well.
She also just has such a presence that our adults trust, and she's always focusing and speaking to the importance of us all taking care of ourselves.
She tries to help you, and she's calm, she's nice, she just wants to help you. Everyone in the school sometimes can get stressed out, and that's when they come to you.
I am in full agreement with that. In fact, she's just one of those amazing people that makes the people around her better. I know that because she's in our building, I have more time with kids, and I have more time to connect with the adults and other folks, because we have somebody who shares the load of the hard things.
An expert to go to when we have a tricky situation.
I love having a school counselor because we can actually help our kids avoid tough situations.
Tells me right and wrong, and she tells me to do this because this is right. She tells me, she tells me not to do this because this isn't right.
I like that you help me with my anxiety, and that you teach me like coping skills, and how to turn my day around when it's hard.
Thank you.
I think it's really unfair that I had to go right after the cute kids, so. Yeah, okay. Why am I bending down? Okay, so I'm Eric Powell. I've talked to you all in person before this year, but what I'll say is, in, I kind of support three different areas. So the student management piece is kind of our code of conduct, our response is when students aren't meeting our expectations. So I try to do a lot of leadership work around dialing in our systems, and then working to support schools in those tier-three and more intense situations, maybe up to expulsion and things like that. But just making sure we're doing everything with empathy, a system, and making sure we're making equitable decisions across our schools. So that's that student management piece. For this year, I've really tried to do a lot more with attendance, kind of working on our systems to kind of support the attendance work of the district, working on our data systems and things like that. But then we started a team of four of us who are working on these students where grad coaches, counselors, or schools are reaching out to us and saying, you know, students have been inactivated, or we're trying all our interventions at the school level, and students are still maybe not showing up to school, these small pockets of kids. And so some of us are going out and doing home visits or meeting with students. I got to go to Mountain View today for a student that finally showed up after a long time. Brooke Maury, the grad coach, called me and said, he's here, I want him to talk to the district person, and I had this really great talk with this student, and he was just like, this is why I'm not going to school. I feel buried, I feel so behind, and we kind of made a commitment that I'll get to checking on him, just like some of our coaches are going to go do that and meet with these students and just say, you're important enough to show up. So hopefully, you know, he follows through with that. I told him I was going to name-drop his situation here and put some pressure on him to show up, but we're really trying to take care of kids that way. And then we also do have programs for students that are maybe struggling with safety or other needs in our schools. I'm excited, I'll skip the middle one for a moment, but we have a program for kindergartners through fifth graders called The Nest. It's a special ed program for students needing support with regulation and gating skills. So that program exists at Summit High School. It's a wonderful program, and the kids are adorable there, and they're getting some support so that they can be successful back at their neighborhood schools. And then Sage Rush is a partial hospitalization program. We partner with the High Desert ESD and gain information on the skills kids are working on in that program before they can then get back to our schools. And then I know a few of you have toured our program downstairs. I know Directors Legrand, Tatum, Chadwick have walked through with me and seen the students there. But we have students that are either in that program at the secondary level through expulsion, or we've added students this year that have maybe not attended school. We have two kids that hadn't been in school for two school years that we've been working with. We got them in the program this year, now they're showing up regularly. Or students that are placed in the program due to safety concerns on their IP, directly related to their disability. And for that program, it's eight wonderful staff members that take care of kids. They do all the work I just support as an administrator, but they're the ones running it every day. And they actually have a ninth staff member who's going to present, okay.
Hi, I'm Luna, the therapy dog. I'm a staff member at Student Services Secondary at the Ed Center. I thought you might enjoy hearing about some of the activities we have done the past couple months with our students. In our social skills class, our students establish and maintain healthy supportive relationships while navigating diverse settings. It's a lot of fun, and there are learning opportunities naturally built into these activities. Our students just launched a serial donation drive for the Giving Plate. To make this happen, students coordinated with the Giving Plate, wrote an email to the Ed Center staff, created a flyer, and then hand-delivered the flyers to Ed Center staff while explaining the donation drive and answering questions about food insecurities. Did you know, one out of six children in Oregon are food insecure? That's a lot. We also volunteer at the Humane Society twice a week, which is near and dear to my canine heart. In addition to volunteering, our students have been working on their social emotional skills while visiting various locations such as the Ben Historical Museum, Schilling's Pumpkin Patch, Crescent Moon Alpaca Farm, and the High Desert Museum. Students also practice their SEL skills while being challenged through physical activities such as bike rides, hiking experiences to Sparks Lake, Chevlin Park, the River Trail, and swimming at Juniper. While at the Ed Center, our students also enjoy working on project-based art projects, culinary experiences, and music. As you can see, our highest interest experiences are a great way for our students to develop and grow a multitude of positive SEL skills. Out of all these activities, my favorite is supporting our students when they need a regulation break in the wellness room. Please come by and say hi to me next time you are in the building.
Hi there, I'm Sarah Young. I am one of the Directors of Student Services in Special Education. And with the three of us, I get to support a third of the schools that we work with. And then one of the other exciting parts of my job that you all asked about earlier is supporting the onboarding of all the new teachers, all the new special education teachers, closer, okay. And also our educational assistants. Past that sort of onboarding part, all of our special education teachers also have a coach that they can call anytime throughout their time in Ben Lepine. For our new special education teachers, they also get mentoring where one of our wonderful coaches comes in and works side by side with them as they sort of build the systems and their knowledge around sort of our schools and their work within special education. So I'm gonna start us out. So special education in Ben Lepine schools plays such a critical role in ensuring that all learners receive the support and access they need, especially as we approach the 50th anniversary of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So that act was passed on November 29th in 1975. So if we just stop and think about that for just a moment, that means that just fifty years ago, if you had a disability, you weren't guaranteed access to an education in our country. So now more than ever, this is such an important reminder of our national commitment to that equity and inclusion. As in special education, our work begins with identifying and evaluating students with suspected disabilities through our Child Find. We then work to develop and implement high-quality individualized education programs, our IEPs, tailored to meet each student's needs. We then provide a wide range of specialized instruction and services, including academic and behavioral supports, speech-language therapy, occupational and physical therapy, and psych services among lots of other things. Central to this work is strong collaboration with families and staff to ensure that we're building inclusive and supportive learning environments where every student can succeed. We also want to make sure we are ensuring full legal compliance with IDEA and state regulations while strengthening school-wide capacity through ongoing professional development, both with our special education staff and coaching and supporting our general education partners. So Colleen is gonna start us off by sharing a little bit more about the core of our mission.
Thanks, Sarah. Thanks for having us. I'm Colleen, I'm one of the special ed directors, and this is my 25th year in Ben Lepine, so I've been here for a while. Special education in Ben Lepine schools plays a vital role in creating inclusion in our schools. It ensures that every student, regardless of their abilities or needs, has access to meaningful learning opportunities and the necessary supports to succeed. By embedding specialized instruction, individualizing plans, and adaptive resources into daily life of school, special education helps build classrooms where every child can participate, contribute, and be valued. This work is just not about meeting legal obligations, it's about upholding the belief that diversity and learning strengthens our entire educational community. The following video highlights one of our students and the positive impact our work has had on him and the school. Tell me a little bit about what you like about school.
I like choir.
You like choir. What else do you like?
I like National Studies. I like two stories, I mean two. And then I went to recess. And I like National Studies and weaver's tree, and I do functional skills.
Well, you like pretty much your whole day. You like advisory, math, social studies, ELA, recess, functional skills. Did you mention your favorite class?
Favorite class, PE.
That's right. You just told me your whole schedule. That is a full schedule. That's different than last year, right?
Right.
You go to school for?
Full day.
Yeah, that's amazing. Nice job. It's really cool. Do you have any really fun friends at school?
I have some friends like Nabel, Alina, and Sloane.
Yeah, and Sloane's one of our really wonderful peer mentors, right?
Yeah, my closest and best.
When does she spend time in this classroom with us?
This, this Sloane, she's nice, I question, butt head.
Does she come in during social studies? Yeah, she comes in during social studies.
Next, you're gonna hear some stories from staff that highlight how collaboration and consultation are the foundation of this work. Our teachers, specialists, and support staff are constantly partnering, sharing expertise, problem-solving together, and building supportive relationships that extend far beyond the classroom. You're gonna hear from two learning specialists, one that's in her first year with Ben Lepine and one who's in her 29th year. And you'll also hear from two building administrators. These stories illustrate the power of teamwork in special education, showing how strong communication and shared responsibility lead to better outcomes for all students.
Hi, I'm Delaney Rice, and I am a learning specialist here at Pacific Crest Middle School. This is my first year working for Ben Lepine School District, but my sixth year working overall. And I'm so excited to be a member of the Ben Lepine team and to be working at Pacific Crest specifically. We have restructured our programming here at Pacific Crest to support students across the full continuum of services and with a wider variety of disabilities. And it's super exciting for me to kind of be in a creating role for a program for students with more moderate to extensive support needs. What that means in practice is we have some students who spend the majority of their day outside of the general education classroom, who receive direct services and direct instructional minutes in math, social studies, ELA, and then in functional routines. So things like cooking and cleaning and just those everyday adaptive daily living skills. And then they also receive supports when they go out into the general education classes for their electives. For choir and PE, and several of our kiddos are also getting to experience some super exciting science experiments and projects in their general ed science.
For instance, I remember a specific time last year, I had a student who I had had for two years. I had her for reading, I had her for writing, I had her for math. She was really not happy that she had all of these services. And we graduated her from math. And then last year, I had her attend her IEP meeting because she was in fifth grade, and I told her she was ready to graduate from writing, and she just burst into tears and gave me the biggest hug. And I didn't think that she had known or appreciated all of the work that went into her behind the scenes, but it was in that moment.
This student service department has supported me as a building leader in a lot of. And I. Specifically.
Josh.
This student service department has supported me as a building leader in a lot of different ways, specifically answering the phone when we are in crisis and need somebody to walk us through our next steps, helping problem solve when we get to a stuck point, centering our decisions around the most vulnerable and making actionable steps of what next, and providing really clear guidelines on how to support students who receive specialized services.
Being relatively new to the Ben Lepine School District, I have to say, like in all honesty, working with the Special Education Department and Student Services has been a profound experience for me, whether it's the collaboration, the responsiveness, the having that really genuine shared vision and belief of what inclusion means. Having that big vision has been really incredible to know it's shared. But then also, that comes down to feeling like folks are really working alongside me and in the support, but then also alongside all of our staff and all of our students and like truly in it with us. And that's been a unique experience for me. I feel like I can pick up the phone call anytime. There have been people that have shown up day in and day out as we're building programs and helping staff, train staff, all the things. And even, we have inclusion PLCs every Thursday, and there has been somebody from the district office all throughout last year that showed up every Thursday to help us have that genuine collaboration and focus on collusion, inclusion. And seeing that actually roll out more this year and year two, the change has been pretty amazing. And so just deep appreciation, kind of coming from a different area and coming into this, it's been something I am grateful for every day.
All right, I'm Josh Marks, I'm also, excuse me, one of the Directors of Special Education. This is my 21st year working in Ben Lepine schools. Last but not least, I want to highlight that we place a very high emphasis on inclusionary practices if you heard people talk. When students with diverse learning needs are fully engaged members of their classrooms, it fosters empathy, creativity, and a sense of belonging for everyone. These practices just don't benefit a few. Transforms culture, creating places where every learner is seen, supported, and celebrated. So to give you an idea of what that means and what you can see, we have a couple of examples, one via video, but the first I'm just gonna kind of tell you about. So I get the privilege of supporting our 18 to 21-year-old transition program, where we have several students who are spending part of their week on the COCC campus learning how to access and navigate college life. All these students experience varying levels of disability and its impact. By supporting our students in their quest for higher education, our students start to see themselves as capable young adults with a place in our broader community. So last, just to kind of give you a little more insight, the video you're about to see captures that same spirit in a different way. Shows in a simple but profound way what can happen when we create these spaces where every student is welcomed and supported.
One student comes to mind is a kindergartner who most of her time is spent in a wheelchair. And she has a gate trainer, and that's the way that she experiences school. And so that's how most students and staff have the opportunity to see her. Yet with our special education teacher, with our physical therapist, with our assistants, there was a moment that happened just a couple weeks ago at a recess. And so they were on the field, and they had a belt that they were learning how to use that had a handle on the back of it, and it was a way of supporting her to get on her feet and practice walking. And so it was a moment that we were all out there and seeing the PT and the special education teacher and the assistants all out there and seeing the smile on the student's face as she lifted to her feet and got herself up and started taking her for a few steps at North Star was pretty incredible. But what also happened is the students that were out at recess around her, who also had only ever seen her in a wheelchair before, noticed that as well. And the excitement they had for her, all of a sudden, within moments, you had a group around her just cheering for her, celebrating with her, and they were getting the ball and they were putting it in front of her so she could kick, and the student was just lighting up. And so it was a small moment full of joy, but I think it highlights how everybody has come together and that collaboration and partnership that created a moment of inclusion that was not just for that student, but for our whole community. Are you happy at school?
Yeah.
That's great, I love to hear that. Can I ask you one more question? I hear you're a pretty great runner. Did you do anything here at school, outside of school?
Yes.
Tell me about that.
So we went outside with our map.
For what? What team?
The cross-country.
The cross-country team. Cross-country team.
I went to the race meet.
And for your last meet, what was so special about it?
So special, good, three laps done.
You did three whole laps?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sad, I missed it.
And third lap was for the blues.
You ran three whole laps, and that was the whole race?
I did two whole races.
That's right. It was really, really awesome. And I know your mom was super proud, everybody, and then for your last race, did people join you for your last little bit?
Guess what?
What?
My friends!
All your friends?
Yes.
Ran with you at the end?
Yes.
So thank you very much. These stories highlight the heart of our work, every student, every future. Thanks for your continued support for Student Services and the village that makes this possible. Any questions?
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And I probably could speak for me, probably all the directors, thank you for information, which I normally do every day, but the special people you touch every single day, and I know they appreciate it very, very much. I'm gonna change this up a little bit, I'm gonna ask the students first, because I know I'd rather you, looking at time, I want to make sure that you have your questions. Do you have any questions for our Student Services, for things that they do in our schools, before we go to the directors?
More of like a celebration and a compliment, I guess. The school counselors at Ben High, especially for career and after high school prep, have been really, really valuable to me specifically, and then I think to a lot of my classmates too. So thank you so much for making that all possible.
I agree with Paige, everything and all those videos and those stories were incredible. So thank you for the work you do.
Sam, you have anything to add?
Not particularly.
All right, no worries. Director Tomlin, do you have any information or questions for the team?
No, I just appreciate being able to meet everybody and hear all the great things you're doing, and it's just amazing work, so thank you.
Directors Ondadias.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question about our school-based health centers and how that fits in to all the wonderful things that you do and the impact that that has had on students.
Yeah, so we have three school-based health centers, one in Lepine, one at Mountain View, and one at Ben High. And they're widely used by students, and they provide a variety of services, including sports physicals, you know, sick visits, whatever kind of visits a student needs. And yeah, they offer behavioral health visits and services, so it's been really a great partnership. We'd like to expand it. It's. It's obviously a financial obligation, but with the help of Kinsey Martin Policy and Advocacy, we have set up a situation where students from our school, our high schools, that don't have a school-based health center, so Caldera and Summit and BTA, are able to get rides through our transportation to appointments at the school-based health center. So that's new this year. We've just gotten it going, and we're just trying to remove barriers and increase access for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you for these celebratory stories. I think they're meaningful. And I am particularly, have been so excited about school-based health centers, the Healthy Schools partnership, and to hear more from the nursing program and supporting kids, particularly it seems like there are more and more type 1 diabetes that are being identified and multiple needs. But I also want to, I appreciate this idea of having every student be seen, supported, and celebrated. But quite frankly, there are many families, particularly families with students with disabilities, who do not feel that their kids have been seen, supported, and celebrated. Same thing with families. I have heard from many families over the last couple of years and prior, but speaking to my time on the board, that feel dismissed, forgotten, minimized, invalidated, overlooked. And many have left the district or found alternative options to feel that support for their kids. And as well as educators with regard to, I am a huge proponent of inclusion, but without support that teachers, particularly general education teachers, I've heard of a lot of concern over the last couple of years, too, with behavioral challenges. And we know even with special education, every month we see the resignations, right, of EAs and special education educators. And I love that there's coaching and there are these things in place, but I can't help but think more effort needs to be happening. That to hear families come to me and talk about their kids and how they feel so poorly treated with regard to, I mean, already to have a kid with a disability is incredibly challenging. And then to have us talking about these supports that are in place and how important it is to celebrate kids with disabilities and feel supported and this family partnership. We can't forget that that doesn't, that is not the reality for many of our families in this district. And I understand there are lots of challenges with, you know, maintaining staff and high-needs disabilities and other concerns and, you know, but I just really want that to be part of the conversation. And I didn't feel that here. And I'm hoping that in the future, we can, we can address how those families are supported, those families who don't feel that their kids are getting the supports they need, the accommodations they need, the modifications that are required by law. And so that's something I'm hoping for the future. I also, one thing I had requested, and maybe I wasn't clear enough about, that it was great that there's this information on who we are. I wanted more about who you serve. And so part of that, for me, would be really helpful, particularly when we talk about, you know, significant disabilities, as well as the increase of autism spectrum, increase of ADHD, to see that breakdown. For us, it would give us a better understanding of what are the challenges? Why are educators feeling that they don't have support? Why are families feeling that they're struggling and they need to tap resources from everywhere, and they're not getting it? Why are other students in their classrooms feeling that they're not getting the education they need because there are behavioral challenges and unmet needs? And so if we could see kind of a breakdown of the categories of what numbers you're talking about and break down between 504s and IEPs and disabilities, as well as modified school day, I would love to see that. And the breakdown between the NESTS and the special programs, that would be really important information for us to get a better understanding. We have families come to us and say, where should my kid go? Why aren't they, why are they struggling? What do we do that we have better information of like what the district is facing? So that would be my request.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
I just want to draw your attention to, some of those questions were answered earlier today and submitted through email that had a breakdown of the data that I think you're requesting, I think at least some of the data that you're requesting. One thing I would invite is if there's follow-up to more specific data points that we're not providing, we'd be glad to provide that. But that came either, was it yesterday or yesterday? Submitted through email to, as a kind of supplementary material, and we can draw your attention back.
I think pop it in the slides so it can be in the board packet.
Yeah, we'd be glad to follow up with that.
Because I know they changed some things for this slideshow, but adding that, and that would be really great.
Be glad to.
Yeah, and I received, that's what I was going to ask you, there's something specific you wanted to see, because then when I saw the numbers, because my questions are more related to the IEPs and the 504s, I know the numbers have increased here the last couple of years. Do you understand, do you have information on why some of those things are, is it learning loss? What is it? Why do you think you're seeing an uptick in IEPs and 504s right now? Because I'm looking at the last two years' numbers, they've went up since 2023. From, think about it, 2023, 504s were at 98, now we're at 128, and last year we were at 145. To this year, in terms, when it comes to IEPs, we've been hovering around 10%, 10% to 11% when it comes to IEPs, but we noticed an uptick in terms of, from a gender standpoint, in IEPs, mostly from males. That numbers went up over previous years. Just want to give me an understanding of what some of those things have shifted, I guess, in terms of 504s and IEPs?
Yeah, I don't know the, you know, the exact causes or the reasons for those things, but I would say around the state, a lot of districts are seeing an uptick in terms of just referrals. And so we have been, we've been, you know, testing more kids, students, more kids are becoming eligible. But, you know, part of it is just, I mean, coming out of COVID, our student demographic, student makeup, student ability to regulate themselves has changed. And that's probably the big, the most marked thing that we've seen in terms of who we serve and how we serve them. There's, yeah, there's just a lot of need out there. I don't know exactly, I don't, I can't put my finger on the cause or the causal relationship between the increases, but we're definitely seeing more kids be identified. So over the last five years, coming out of COVID, we identified an additional 264 students for, who have IEPs. And we'll, that number's based on our December 1 census. So we'll, in about two weeks, have another, have our 2025 count to see where we're at with that. But we anticipate we're going to see increases again, year, 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 year.
And if I might add, I do want to
Steve, we didn't get an email, or I didn't, and nobody else does, so.
I just sent it to all y'all again.
Thank you.
I just sent it to you all, so you can have it right now.
Okay. The other thing I want to add to that is this is a department that is being stretched very, very hard. This continues to be a point of conversation for everybody sitting at that table. The fact that we can talk about a counselor, at least a part-time counselor at every single one of our schools now is a huge win in a situation where we've lost, in a period of about seven years, we've lost over 2,000 students in total enrollment. And so I would tell you that while the needs of students, as a general rule, I think, are increasing, we are learning to be able to stretch our dollars every single year in a way that puts strain in every aspect of how we're functioning in the district. And so I want to, I want to give this team a shout-out for their ability to find solutions that we, you know, I don't think any one of them at that table, nor would Dr. Burke or I, turn our head to additional resources if it were to come in support of students with extreme and special needs across the district. And so this is, we have work to do. We know we have work to do. We acknowledge that we have work to do. And I can assure you that if we had the ability, we would be implementing even more opportunities. But with the resources we have, we are constantly balancing the amount of stretch and the challenge on our budget to be able to meet the needs of every student that walks through our door.
So I'll rephrase my question then. What helps do y'all need?
Well, what I would say is that with the addition of 264 additional students with IEPs, we've had no additional staffing, so.
That's a significant different story than I think what we'll just share. Well, this and to kind of emphasize Dr. Fisher's comments is that we want to know that whole story. Otherwise, it sounds like y'all are doing amazing, which I know y'all are, and that there are still more supports and needs that you have, too. And I think that's important for us to know about.
And I don't think it's necessarily just about funding. I mean, of course, that's really significant, but I think one of the pieces that is essential with this district has been about building engagement with families and trust and transparency. And so when I speak to families who have felt abandoned or forgotten or not included, I think that doesn't require funding. I think that requires giving a human lens to what families are facing today. I mean, just all the things you just mentioned, Sean, that families are faced with regard to students, right, and regulation. And we could throw in screens, we could throw in, you know, state affairs of political events, all these things that connect to all these different other things. But I'm talking about particularly with disabilities, not necessarily mental health or maybe things that maybe fit a 504 or just that address healthy schools, that sort of thing. But particularly with disabilities, how do we, I mean, some of it is just about focusing more on universal design for your general education teachers, which I know is happening, but I think that is one way, because the funding is not. I mean, we've had many conversations. The funding is, it's not coming, right? And so we have to figure out other ways of how we can do that. And I feel for you, I get that, but the reality is, we are here about students, right, students and families, so.
So I'm going to start with my hardest question first for Director Powell. Did you voice Luna?
No, so that was Marshall, one of our teachers, but yeah, he did a good job. The students wrote the script, and then they asked the adult to talk.
Okay, awesome. Next is kind of a question comment, because I've heard at, you know, some schools using AI to help adapt lessons to students with disabilities. So if you could just talk kind of maybe a little bit about how we're doing that? Is that something we're doing just like one, you know, learning specialist at school? Are they taking that on? Is that something that at a district level, we're helping teachers and our learning specialists with?
I mean, you start.
I can start, sure. Yes, no, I think that's something we've, are looking at our learning specialists as, or doing training. So we have these JABA-like trainings and the Educator Network days. So we've now, over the last two years, have a couple of folks in the field who are digging into that a little bit deeper in terms of trying to, especially at the secondary level, when we look at kind of modifying content for kids. And so I think we have two or three teacher leaders who are really kind of taking that on and championing kind of some of that work and then kind of sharing that out. But we're also learning a lot as we do that, so I think we're just kind of being careful to make sure we're doing it the right way, but we're definitely digging into it. And we have some teacher leaders who are very interested. And I guess one of the big, one of the neat things is one, one of our teachers actually partnered with like a math teacher at their high school, and they kind of went through the whole Math 1 course. And they kind of have a pathway all the way through that just by partnering with the general ed teacher in that particular site.
Yeah, no, and I think that work is so important. You know, I was at one of our high schools a couple of years ago in the Life Skills Room, and the Life Skills teachers were saying that it was really hard to get some of their students into general ed classes, often because the teachers didn't want to address the behavior and didn't feel like they were equipped. So I just kind of see AI use in terms of, you know, giving it another tool to teachers so that these classes are accessible to students who otherwise might not be able to access them. And then my last question, which is not directly brought up here, but it is part of, Director Howe, your work, and it was brought by a family and a student who was very concerned about the decision that was made, which as a board member I was not aware of, to stop ranking at the high school level. And I was looking through our policy, and I didn't see anything written in policy about this. And this was a student who, you know, thought to be at the top of their class and being told that they could only tell universities that they were in the top 10th percentile, which seems like that does disadvantage someone who might be number three, who wants to go to a school like Stanford that still does want class rank if we offer it. And so I'm just kind of wondering how that decision was made, where it is written in policy, how families can access it, what were students, was student voice brought into that decision? I would just like to hear you kind of talk a little bit about that, please.
Do you, I mean, I know that you submitted something, so I was in the process of putting something together. So, I mean, I would prefer to be able to talk about it with you. But yeah, we have a ranking messaging that I have put together for you. It was probably four years ago. Yeah, sorry. And so the research, I mean, almost 60% of high schools no longer rank, and the holistic review of a student application is what is best for a student. And rather than having a number of like your number one or your number two, but actually looking at your leadership, your rigor, your academics, your recommendations, your leadership opportunities, volunteer opportunities, that is best practice. And most high schools have moved in that direction. And when you look at the National Association for College Admissions Counseling, they say it's the single least important factor in an application.
I still do wonder how students feel about that, because for a student who might put all of their eggs, if you will, in an academic basket, and there are students who are like that, does this disadvantage them? So I would love to hear from a student on that. A student who was very concerned that they felt like they were being harmed by this policy.
Yeah, so from what we've heard at Bend High, I know this is just an experience that happened last year at our school, actually. So who was our valedictorian? Aaron Goyle, I believe. He was obviously incredible, he was very academic, like, top of the class, 100% deserved that position. But what he had done was take a bunch of online AP classes to boost his GPA so he could secure that valedictorian spot. At this point, I'm pretty sure he was already admitted to college. I think he went to the U of O Honors College with an AB diploma. So on top of this, he was taking AP classes online to secure that valedictorian spot over another girl, Sonika, I believe. And they're both obviously incredibly academic people, but I think a lot of this, like, rigor in between salutatorian and valedictorian was a lot of the reason that they were able to have so much success in their schools. And then it, and I'm not sure if this is because of the ranking system or what this was, but the AP classes he took time to do out of school and out of anything else online were not therefore counted towards his GPA, and therefore his GPA was not risen from the extra work he did.
Harper, if I may, I think we need to be really careful here. We're talking about personal student records.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
And we need to be careful that we're not sharing information about individual students that is not ours to share. And so I want to just be cautious about, I think the feedback on what it would mean to have percentage of ranking is a conversation. I think we need to be really careful on the vouch-al conversation. We're crossing an area here that I'm not real comfortable with, so.
I apologize, yeah. But anyway, just in a general sense, I think that the ranking, I understand the negative parts of the ranking, but I do also see the positive kind of academic rigor that it can create in a school, so.
Yeah, I agree with Harper specifically because you said that it was the lowest factor in something like applying to college, but some colleges are incredibly selective. So if a student was shooting for, Stanford was brought up as an example, or an Ivy League, I think that is still a very valid factor that they may take into consideration, having just applied for college myself. So while it could harm some of the lower-ranked students, I don't really see the negatives of having some of the higher-ranked students be able to share that with colleges that they're interested in.
Thank you.
Also just adding that I believe, based off of knowing many students who have worked incredibly hard for their grades and have worked very, very hard to get where they are, with extra barriers, obviously.
with extra barriers, obviously, that some might not have. Putting that ranking system in place could possibly maybe salute their efforts, is a good, is a good word for it. Make it so that, yes, you might not have been able to get, become the first in the class, but being seventh in your class is still incredibly both valuable and impressive. So, that's, that's what I have seen from my peers.
Yeah, and, you know, I just think of it, too, in terms of sports. We never tell kids, you can't be the best at sports. We're not ever going to rank you in sports. Like, there are rankings in sports. And, you know, school for some kids is a you-stress, not a distress. You know, just because we don't rank. I, I just think there needs to be more conversation on this. Like I said, because this was a student issue and we have three members of our Student Voice Council who seem to disagree with what our formal policy is. It doesn't appear to be written anywhere. And even if we don't formally rank, can students request a rank be sent? Can they request a more granular percentile, first percentile, third percentile? Because there's a big difference in a class of 300 being third versus 30. And that work should be acknowledged.
All right, my final question is this. I talked to constituents across a large swath of community, within the community, from different families. But I'm going to primarily speak for mostly the black and brown students that I talk to and their families a lot. They want more black and brown counselors, bottom line. I know the district is, is something we need to continue to work on to in terms of getting more teachers and stuff like this to look like, you know, the students that we have within the population. But they would love also more information on where they can find more black and brown specialists for them to be able to get the treatments they need outside of the schools, too. Because many of them have issues, can try and chew, do this. I've had too many families reach out to me and say, hey, do you know any more black counselors? Do you know more black counselors? Because the ones at school, we love them. But at the same time, too, I don't think they fit our needs because they may not have some lived experience that we may want to be able to address. So, those are the things that I've been hearing. They would love to be able to get more of those things done and taken care of as well. So, those are just the things that they mentioned to me, just to bring you to your attention. But I know as a district, we need to continue to work on this as well overall. But at the same time, from a council perspective, they would love to see that happen more. Especially me being, I have a master's degree in counseling. And I'm pretty much the only black counselor, really, when you think about it, in the district, and I'm on the board. So, think about it from that perspective. So, it would be great to be able to see some of those different pieces as well. Directors, any other questions?
Yeah, I just, so we all just got that email with the breakdown of details. Thank you so much. This is really helpful. And I, one thing, just looking at this, I, I think how do six occupational therapists, and again, I don't know the, how many of, but I look at some of these categories, I'm thinking there's a good chance they qualify for occupational therapy. How are six occupational therapists addressing the needs of all these students? Is, is that, when, when Marcus asks, what do you need? Is that, is that working with the shift that's happened this year with those occupational therapists? And if it is, great. If not, I'm just curious, yeah.
I, I'll talk a little bit because I spend a lot of time with occupational therapists. So, I think one of the things is, it's new this year. So, we, we still collaborate with high-dose ESD, but we're very excited to bring them on our team so that we could provide even more robust services that, to our students. I would think that just sort of from a caseload perspective, I think not every student qualifies for occupational therapy services, which is in the form of consultation, which is very different than direct services. And so, as far as sort of how that's working right now, I would say that our, our initial, it's, it's been really successful. I think the feedback that we're getting from our schools is they're very excited to have them. They're, because they've been so welcome and they're excited, now I think it's really sort of reiterating and nearing the scope of what they can provide. Because now they're here, everyone's like, we would love all the things that you can do. And so, I think that's our current challenge that we're working through right now is just, they're here, they're excited. The work is moving forward. We have lots of momentum. And then let's really just focus in on what are those priorities that we can do really well with a number of students? And then see from there and assess what we should be growing or focusing on.
Thank you.
Sure.
Directors, any more questions? Students? Thank you, Sean. I thank your team. Thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it very much. And please, please let us know what we can do to continue to help, you know, support your needs. Thank you so much. And now, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Cook for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair LaGrand. I have five things I want to provide updates on. The first one is on October 29th, a group of administrators went to the Giving Plate to observe the way that the Giving Plate builds the service that they provide in the community for providing access to food for families in our community. I think it was a very meaningful visit. We are doing, I think, Kinsey, four of these this year? Is that right? Three, four of these this year. I would invite you all to join us on one of those visits. It was a deeply learning experience for me about how people that go into the, the Giving Plate, and it's, I think their hours are Wednesday through Saturday, how they get access.